The roll, oh wait a minute. Prior to this council, beginning of this council meeting, a newly elected council member will be sworn in. It says prior to. We've agendized this for being prior to and I've just called the meeting to order. We are in big, big trouble here. I see prison stripes and everything. An executive session will be held beginning at 6:00 PM. Public session will begin at 7:00 PM. Town council may recess. Okay, we're gonna do that. Let's go with the call to order. Let's go with the roll, please. Actually, you can't call. Can you? Do we? We need to do her first. We swear her in because otherwise you could've... Yeah, she's still not here.
Yeah.
See, I have never had done, had to do it this way before. Catherine, remember it's Cave Creek. Don't do like Ron Sova did.
I have another little surprise.
Right.
So if you keep raising that. I, Catherine Royer. It's a new, it's a new pronunciation that I just discovered on our trip to the Amazon. A customs agent told us that Royer is a French name and we have discovered our French heritage in Gabe's background. So I think it's much prettier and I am assuming that pronunciation. So here we go with a new identity in my new term as a councilperson. I, Catherine Royer, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties as town council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm. Thank you.
Welcome.
Little does she know.
All right, now you may call the roll.
Councilmember Royer. Councilmember Morris. Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Deefendurfer.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Here, all present in county.
We made you Mayor Bunch A for the day.
Oh my goodness. So you know, one of these days, yeah, okay. An executive session will be held during the regular council session for legal matters pursuant to Arizona revised statute section 38-431.0 for print C, A, print C3, and print C4, discussion, consultation, direction, legal advice for the town attorney and manager regarding contracts and their negotiations with affiliate of Park West concerning the implementation of Town Transfer Development Rights Ordinance Number Two, consultation with and direction to the town attorney and outside council regarding negotiation with and possible claims involving Carefree and the possible transfer of certain assets of the Cave Creek Water System to Carefree. And I think, do we need to move in, because we're doing something different, we gonna move into, all those in favor moving in? I need a motion. Move to convening to executive session?
So moved.
All in favor? All right, now we're gonna do it. We're changing.
Because it's cold and everybody's gonna be standing outside. So we're gonna go to the conference room.
Thank you. So we can let them in, how nice.
Boy, you picked up a lot in the Amazon.
We're live. Welcome to the thousands of people on the internet watching us tonight. Welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, January 7th, 2019. Let's see. Ms. Demmett, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? I know, I know you probably remember the first word.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public announcements. Just want to welcome everybody back. We're all bright and shiny and bushy-tailed, missing the national championship game this evening, so we can do our public service. For those that weren't aware, we had, well, Carrie, did you find anything on what we talked about earlier?
We did.
Oh, cool. Then I'm just gonna wait and let you do it. I don't have any announcements, except welcome back. And that's not an announcement, that's a greeting. Public announcements. Do we have any, any forms this evening?
Call of the public.
A call of the public, yeah. I'm sorry, call of the public. I know what I'm, I can't, I can see but I can't read.
John Sellers.
Good evening, councilors. My name is John Sellers. I'm in 6231 East Mark, where you need to work in the Rancho Madera subdivision. I've been in dispute with the Rancho Madera HOA over CC and R violations by homeowners by chicken wire netting and plants are blocking internal channels. So I used the Department of Real Estate HOA dispute resolution process with a hearing before and administrative law judge at the office of administrative hearings. I'd like to generally thank the town staff in helping on flooding issues related to this. Most confirm that not only is part of the Rancho Madera subdivision in the floodplain, but the association common land also includes part of the andorica of the watch. To use an analogy, FEMA the flood district, the town staff and the developer designed a Ferrari. You give a Ferrari to an inexperienced driver and there'll be some accidents. Association's defense of the hearing was, there's been no flooding. Plus their key exhibit was a plaque which did not reference any approvals on flooding by the town. They testified that Mr. Sova, also a Rancho Madera board member, had spent 20 hours researching this issue without plats. Now, I know municipalities cannot get involved in enforcing CC and R, believe me, I do understand that. But the administrative law judge just issued the ruling last week and she went way beyond chicken wire. She effectively decided to circumvent the whole municipal flooding approval process when she ruled, quotes, "No part of Rancho Madera lies in the designated floodplain, although there is a wash designated as part of the floodplain to the north. The elevation of Rancho Madera was raised to make it higher than the development next door." End of quotes. This to me seems an extraordinary breach, extraordinary example of executive and administrative overreach which goes way beyond the privilege she was given. Why spend taxpayers' money on FEMA, town council planning approvals, flood districts, if an administrative law judge can just stroke of a pen over a rule that? Now, I have until the end of this month to apply for a rehearing to the Department of Real Estate who effectively control this process. I want to make the point that I don't believe there's any separation of powers issues to your town, London, to your town next to me, because an administrative law judge and the Department of Real Estate are all parts of the same executive branch that you are. This is my request to you as part of the call to the public. I'd like the, one, this reading, I'd ask this be referred to town staff reviewing possible inclusion or future council agenda. I'd also like it to be included, if possible, on the next planning commission agenda for the following reasons. One, that's where the real legwork on this subdivision was done and there was lots of legwork on flooding done. The, Mr. Sova's now back on the commission and he was the one that uncovered the association's key exhibit, being the plaque approved by town council on Jan. 30th, 2007. Mr. Sova, by the way, I presume was acting in his official capacity because when he did eventually ask for the Asbille plans, which were a condition of, that's approved, which I'd uncovered, he was given a copy for free by town staff of the scams that I'd paid $60 to the town for. He might also help us understand why the plaque, which was the central piece of evidence on Jan., approved on Jan. 30th by town council, is valid, because town council since confirmed that there was no council meeting that day. Thank you.
No more. Town manager.
Can you find those photos? I apologize, our IT coordinator is ill and Robert's kinda winging it. Okay. The Cave Creek Fiesta, or the Fiesta Bowl Parade included a Cave Creek rodeo entrance into that on, that Saturday and so I went down, we took some pictures. I just thought we'd show the group of folks that were down there promoting the Cave Creek rodeo. And we've got four different photographs of the big group that goes down.
This is Scottsdale.
This is down the city of Phoenix on Central and Camelback in the Fiesta Bowl Parade. So this is the wagon they had and the mayor was there and members of the rodeo committee.
Not, not really.
Who is, who are all the folks?
Our rodeo royalty was there.
Oh, the royalty was there, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're there. And then we had, we had three riders up front with carrying flags and then three walkers and then the, then we had dancers behind and then we had mini horses and then we had 18 mounted riders as well. We had probably one of the biggest participation in the, in the Fiesta Bowl rodeo, Fiesta Bowl Parade this year. It was, it was quite a deal, nice and cold.
It was freezing.
It was cold.
When I left home, it was 28 degrees and had to wait about an hour for you to get down the road there to the intersection, but, but it was good. It was a big exhibit.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, kind of bring a tear to your eye. I see the participation of the people from the area involved in that. Leslie Jensen was the one spearheading.
Good, and that's all I have.
Sorry about helping.
No, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, action items, general agenda. Presentation by Brian J. Hemmerly, CPA, CFE, and/or Marilyn May, CPA and partner of Henry and Horn, LLP, and town council approval. Town of Cave Creek Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, is the official financial results, presented by the finance director, who is also the audiovisual guy tonight.
Thank you.
I'm impressed.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for your patience. I attempted to show you those pictures. Yes, so this is the official financial report for fiscal year 2018 and Brian's gonna, Brian Hemmerly from the firm of Henry and Horn CPAs is going to do a brief presentation of the audit of the financial statement for fiscal year 2018. It ended June 30th.
And I have a question for you.
Oh, sure.
We have this nice, pretty bound thing up here, but also in our packet this, this week was this, this nice thing. Is there any differences between the two?
There's absolutely no difference, Mayor, except for the nicer cover. I simply wanted to make sure that you had a copy of it for your review prior to this evening's acceptance of it and the nicer bound version I received later, so I gave it to you later.
I really appreciate it. I don't believe I could sleep through another reading.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name again is Brian Hemmerly. I'm with Henry and Horn CPAs and we are the town's audit firm for the financial statement audit each year. I'm here to present the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. Up here you'll see some slides that we've presented. This is pretty brief, so we'll go through it somewhat quickly and then we have some financial information. This year, the town received an unmodified opinion. That essentially means it's a clean opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. We also do an audit called the GAGIS or Yellow Book Reports, generally accepted government accounting standards, and that also received a clean opinion. What we do in that audit is specifically look at the compliance with grants, contracts, laws, regulations, debt covenants that you have, that the town has, and we had not found any issues related to any of those items for that particular audit report as well. You can find these reports, well, the Yellow Book Report is issued separately. It will be uploaded to the town's website. The overall financial statement report starts on page, it's unnumbered, but it, it's briefly after page, Roman numeral seven, couple pages after that. It's technically page one of the report. So it's a three-page report and again, it's just an unmodified opinion in relation to your financial statements. I have some required communication I have to say with all of you as dated in our, oh, go back one more slide. Okay, there you go. The engagement letter dated April 13, 2018, stated our responsibilities in relation to the audit and that's to provide reasonable assurance to the CAFER before you that they are materially correct, the statements are materially correct. We also review your internal controls, make sure there are no issues with the effectiveness of your internal controls. Some significant accounting policies that are found in the report start with note one of the financial statements, talks about the town and all the different significant items related to the town. That's in the very first note disclosure. We had no difficulties encountered during the audit. We had no uncorrected misstatements from town management or the finance department. We had no disagreements with management throughout the course of the audit and we are not aware of any other consultation from another CPA firm to essentially audit shop, meaning if we gave you a bad opinion and you went out and found another auditor to give you a good opinion, that's not the case this year. Required by the state is what's called the expenditure limitation report. You're probably aware of this. We also review that to make sure you fall within the state required guidelines of expending the correct amount or just under the correct amount and we had no issues with that and it was issued timely as well. You had no single audit this year. A single audit is essentially when you receive federal funding from the federal government. If you spend more than $750,000, the town spends more than $750,000 in federal-related funding in any given fiscal year, then we're required to specifically look at that spending to make sure it was spent correctly. There wasn't anything close to that amount as far as federal spending goes for the town, so there was no requirement for a single audit this year. Some really high-level financial highlights. This is government-wide, so this includes both your enterprise funds, your water, your sanitation, and your governmental funds. Your assets, liabilities, essentially equity, net position, revenues and expenses are all there. The green bar is 2018, the blue bar is 2017, so you can see your assets increased for the year, your liabilities decreased substantially from some payoff of debt. Most of your assets in green there, that increase is mostly from cash, very liquid related items, and that's because of your improvement in sales tax revenues this year, which shows an increase in revenue for your green bar there. Expenses were up just a tiny, tiny bit, a good control of expenses this year for the town or for 2018 year in relation to the 2017 year. So overall, your equity, your net position increased from the prior year. Your fund balance, which is essentially, again, equity, but this is for your governmental funds. You have your general fund and then all the other governmental funds, so the blue bar is all your governmental funds and the green bar is your general fund and then we have the last three years and you can see in 2018 you had a nice bump, again, due to the increase in sales tax and shared revenues with the state. So that is my brief presentation. I can get into more detail if you'd like or if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
So this is for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
That's correct.
Is this six-month period between then and now typical, between the end of the fiscal year and the time when we get the audit?
Yeah, usually we are presenting in December 2018, or we try to come out in the December timeframe. There was some difficulties encountered with timing as far as getting us scheduled for presentation in December and...
Generally.
Generally, it's in December, yeah, yeah. You do submit your report to what's called the GFOWA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. It's required to be issued to them by the end of December 31st in order to get your certificate. The audit was issued well, well before that. I mean, I believe it was early December is when it was issued. So the only reason we're presenting in January this year is simply due to conflicts on calendars.
There's public comment on this one. We don't have, nobody wants to say anything. We're back to council.
Do you make a motion?
I do.
I'll make a motion.
Unless there's any more questions. Don't see any.
Motion to approve the comprehensive annual financial report as the official financial revolt results for the town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year 2018.
Second.
Okay, do we have to, yeah, let's do a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Deefendurfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Clancy.
Yes.
Councilmember Royer.
Yes.
Royer.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, by seven, zero, motion carries. We're on to agenda item number two, council discussion, possible approval of the purchase of a new 2019 Caterpillar 420 F2 4EC backhoe. I'm assuming that somebody's gonna come tell us about this and...
We have the town engineer and the public works, what is your title? What's your title these days, supervisor?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. I know that after the riveting of financial that we just had, that this is going to, you know, pale in comparison, but we, it also has to do with finances. For the last three years, we've been renting a backhoe at about $2,000 a month, which means at the end of this, when we decide to give it back, we will have zero asset but we'll have zero liability. What we'd like to do is request for the town to buy a backhoe. We are not trading one in because we will just stop leasing the other one. And we put out bids and we received bids from three manufacturers. We looked at a Caterpillar, we looked at a Case, and we looked at a John Deere backhoe. And the most, the best bang for the buck, really the lowest price came back, was the Caterpillar. So we are looking at a Caterpillar F420 backhoe. Tyler, if you, you did the bidding and got, made sure that we followed proper procedures. So other than that, if you have any specific questions, those are basically the general reasons why we would like to ask you to fund the backhoe.
Councilman Morris.
Is this just questions or comments?
Questions.
Okay, I haven't, what's the payout on that?
The payout? We're gonna pay it out right now. I mean, we're gonna buy it. We have it in the budget.
Financial payout.
By, would you clarify exactly what you're looking for?
How many years before we get our money back?
About five.
I knew you knew that, I knew that, I love to hear you say.
Yes, about five, about five years. We've probably spent around $75,000 on the rental of the backhoe that we don't get back and it's a 2019 that we would be buying.
Wouldn't you say that's about a 20% return on our investment in the backhoe?
I think so, maybe even more than that when you're saying that we will probably keep this backhoe about 15 years.
Any other questions from council? Good question. There is public comment on this. We're back to council. For a motion, please, someone.
Want a motion?
A motion to approve the expenditure of $117,836.63 to purchase a 2019 Caterpillar 420 F2 4EC backhoe with a split cost allocation to Public Works, Cave Creek Water, Desert Hills Water, and the Water Enterprise Fund as presented.
Second.
Oh, comment?
Well, I talked to him, it was $75,000 in three years and we're taking it back. It makes sense that we move forward and do this, given how much we use them, so. Thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you for bringing it forward and doing the work.
Councilman McGuire, you had a second?
I did. Thank you for the work that you did and the documentation that you did in the process. We appreciate that.
Councilman Morris?
This is a really good purchase. It has a tremendous return on investment. Maybe we could've been a little sooner. There's other things out there like that that we can make money on, that we bring those things forward and I hope that there is a preventive maintenance program.
There is. I mean, we've been doing the preventative maintenance on the one that we've been renting, so it's really the same type of maintenance. Tyler takes very good care of our equipment. I mean, some of it gets, you know, it is in the field all the time, but, you know, Tyler does take good care of it.
Good project.
Any other comments from council? All right, financial roll, please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Deefendurfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Clancy.
Yes.
Councilmember Royer.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, by seven, zero, motion carries. Agenda item number three, Sprouts. Council discussion, possible approval, resolution number R 2019-01, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to approve a transfer of development rights agreement by and between the town of Cave Creek and CCCOEF LLC declining a right of first refusal on authorizing the town manager to sign the open space easement approved by the transfer of the development rights agreement.
Mayor, members of council, this resolution that would, should you choose to approve, is the component of the Sprouts project coming forward and this is necessary for them to move forward in completion of the project, which ties in then to the city of Phoenix IGA and the whole reimbursement of the funds for the IGA project approved in the IGA. So with that, the town attorney will go into the details of the agreement and Ian, Ian is here? He was here. Oh, okay. He'll be able to talk about the property to be used for the density transfer.
Ian has some pictures.
There is, he's got them.
There you go. Council, I mean, Mayor, members of council, this is really the implementation of an ordinance you, your council adopted a little over two years ago, a transfer of development rights, with the theory behind such an ordinance being that you may, you may be, you may be required to consolidate density to bring a developer like Sprouts, but you have a code that limits that. And so what you do is, with the goal of consolidating open space and creating density to bring critical mass for like a Sprouts development, you have an ordinance that allows the sending property owner to sell development rights to the receiving property owner, in this case Sprouts or an affiliate of Sprouts, preserving in a consolidated manner open space and giving additional development rights to bring Sprouts. So this will be your first effort at implementing that statute that was adopted two years ago. It will take the form of two documents. One, a document that you will approve tonight and the mayor will sign, the transfer of development rights agreement, and then that will authorize the manager to then sign an undisturbed open space easement that accomplishes the consolidation of the open space, obligates that space to be restored, and allows the development to occur on the receiving property. Three decisions tonight, or three actions. One is to approve the transfer development agreement. Two, the ordinance that you authorized gave you the right of first refusal if you wanted to buy those development rights. You can say to Sprouts, no, we'd rather buy them and hold them in an inventory to sell in the future. We're recommending that you decline that right of first refusal so that you can accomplish the density to allow the Sprouts development. So that's the second thing of this resolution. First is approving the agreement. Second, declining the right of first refusal. And third, authorizing the manager to sign the actual document that will cause the undisturbed open space easement to be implemented and be recorded. Now, having said that, because the negotiations with the sending property owner are still, are still underway, I'm, I will be asking for authority, do you approve as to form, you will approve the transfer of development rights agreement as it is and the mayor will only be authorized to sign it as is. There's an exhibit called the sending property owner consent that may need some minor modifications. I would like the resolution to say, approving exhibit D in the form, with minor modifications that are not substantial for exhibit D, and likewise with the undisturbed open space easement, there may be some minor modifications there. I would like orally after you approve this resolution to say, we're authorizing the town manager and the town attorney to implement non-substantial formative changes to the open space easement. And if we believe there's substantial... open space easement, and if we believe they're substantial, we'll then agendize that to come back to you. So three actions, one resolution, implementing an ordinance that was adopted two years ago, consolidating open space so your constituents can enjoy the open space in one location, and making sure that open space remains undisturbed, and creating density so you can bring Sprouts. Any questions?
I'm sitting here wishing I had a cheat sheet for when we make the motion.
Well, Tyler, if you, if you approve, you read it, and then if you don't mind, I will then ask for a modification on the-
All right, all right, okay, there is no questions from council, there is public comment on this, on this item. We're back to council for a motion, I'll go ahead and do this, I hadn't got to do one in forever. Move to approve resolution number R-two thousand and nineteen dash zero-one, a resolution to the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Mayor Cooper County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to approve a transfer of development rights agreement by and between the town of Cave Creek and CCCOEF LLC, a Delaware limited liability company declining a right of first refusal and authorizing the town manager to sign the open space easement approved by the transfer of development rights agreement.
Second.
All right, we need this to move forward, been looking forward to it. Okay, you want us to vote on it now, or you want to add this stuff?
We need to add this.
Okay.
You will authorize non-substantial changes to exhibit D to the transfer of development rights agreement, and to the undisturbed open space easement to be executed by the manager, with the manager and the town attorney coming back to you if we believe the changes are more than substantial, non-substantial.
You don't want me to repeat that, now do you?
No, it's about changes.
All right, so I guess we're back to council for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes, clearly have it seven, zero, it looks like the last thing on the agenda item is adjournment.
All right.
Some of.
Aye. Y'all can go catch the, maybe catch the tail end of the national championship game.
I have no idea, I'm recording it, don't tell me.